I call this City Commission Budget Workshop of Tuesday, August the 27th, 2024 to order at 5:04 PM. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Commissioner Emrick McPherson Senior, Father by the pleasure of the Legion.
Good heavens, Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to come into your presence, Father. We ask that you just guide and just the Holy Spirit just lead us, Father, as we be able to conduct the business of this city, Father. We ask that you give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding of what we are doing, Father. We ask that you just continue to bless the city, Father, those leaders of the city, bless the residents of this city, Father. And in the mighty name of Jesus, we give you all the glory and all the praise.
Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Beck.
President.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
President.
Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams.
Present.
Commissioner MacPierson.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Present.
And City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you staff, thank you Commissioners, and most importantly, thank our listening audience for being here to participate in our budget workshop. At this time, I turn this portion over the program over to our City Manager to lead us in the budget discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Commission. As again, we are here to conduct the budget workshop for this afternoon. And we have in our presence, along with Ms. Blanco's staff here, Mr. Joseph Martin, who is our city's interim finance director. And we'll walk through the workshop as you presented the backup information. Okay. And you should be able to view it. Okay. So the agenda will follow, we're going to be looking at fiscal year '24, '25. That's the proposed budget for next year. We have a summary that's made available. We would talk about other factors that impact the budget and give a financial update, and then we'll have closing remarks that will include questions and answers. Critical dates, we want to make sure we following. Tonight, we're going through the workshop and planning meeting. And we've already advertised and have scheduled the September 11th first hearing for the tentative millage rate and budget for 6:00 PM. Note that if passed tonight, we will officially change the commission date from September 10th to the 11th based on the county's budget hearing scheduled for the 10th. And the second hearing is scheduled for September 24th, second and final hearing. And the new year budget, fiscal year begins October 1. As presented, there is no change in the millage, there's no increase. The current millage is 6.5419, as approved a few commission meetings ago. The assessed value, current rollback rate is 6.027%. The current year proposed rate as a percentage change of rollback is 8.54%. We'll talk and kind of peer down on all of the funds that's part of the budget. There's a couple of different funds over in our overall budget, will give you what's proposed and what percentage of the total those funds cover under our budget. A general fund is the biggest fund, and we'll have an opportunity to kind of, once we go through it, we go back over and and kind of detail some of the things that's included in all of the funds for your clarification. The general fund is 61% of our total budget. The Henderson Endowment Fund is 26%, $26,000, which is just below, is not really a full percentage, so we look at it as 0%. The special revenue fund is 10% of our overall budget. Capital project fund is just that, the capital projects, and it's 22%. Marina campground fund is 4%, and cemetery fund is 2%. One of the things that we will discuss and kind of help develop, not only for this upcoming fiscal year, but looking forward in the future, to see what percentage of our budget is aligned to what particular project or category. I will note that with the Marina and campground being only 4% of our budget, I will be encouraging in future years that that percentage increases. And in order to make it increase, we'll have to continue to look for opportunities through grants. But we also will have to look at opportunities for other revenue streams to support that. And the reason I say it, I think is obvious. Once we're able to increase that amount associated with the campground, we're looking for the campground to be the impetus for overall economic development of the city. But if we're merely spending 4% on that goal now, that's a lot of work from the commission and the staff to improve that and increase that. And I think, I'm almost sure, when that increases, the overall economic development of the city increases. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Okay. This next graph is the same information, just put on a bar graph scenario. And it kind of shows, again, in a different format, all of the different funds and the percentages. And the general fund is the big fund, that's where most of the monies are, and most of the dollars is coming into the city. But again, we're looking for a date when the Marina and campground can get very close to that, if not superseded. Okay? Current budget general fund, fiscal year '24, '25. Our current budget proposed for next fiscal year, starting October 1, is $5,438,908. And as you well know, we have to balance that, so our revenues are projected at that amount, along with our expenditures. What are some of the things that's included in all of the funds? There's some wage adjustments in all of the different funds that you'll learn a little bit more about tonight. And as I go, I will tell you, there's a total number of 45 FTEs on the city, within the city's purview right now. So we have 45 positions across all of the funds. We have a few that's vacant right now, that we have not advertised or feel from this past fiscal year. And there will be a desire to do that. But as it stands now, we have a total of 45 FTEs. And I'll give you a breakdown along those department and different funds to kind of let you know where most of these employees are falling. And there are some inflationary trends affecting the operational costs and cost of increase to insurance. So there's some fluctuations that will impact the overall cost of the budget. So we'll take a look at the first fund that was mentioned, just take a look at the general fund revenue by type. And these are all of the types of general fund revenue. The fund type is to the left, the proposed budget, and the percentage of the total is on the right-hand column. And just take a look at those different revenues that come in under the general fund, fund type. These are where all of our taxes and fees and permits and intergovernmental revenue, intergovernmental revenue of those things that come in by way of other types of taxes. So when all of these are calculated, this gives us a general fund overview, our total revenues. Again, match with what we just suggested a minute ago. And these taxes come in various different times of the budget year. Some come in monthly, some come in quarterly, some come in as they are received, but these are the different types. Just give you an example of franchise fees, those are franchise fees are just that, all of those things associated with franchises that we come across and are dealing with on a city basis, that comes in at $418,500 a year. Is there, was there an opportunity to increase these? Of course. But again, that's all aligned with the activity that's going on in the city. Okay. Fines and forfeitures, I'm going to give you another example, these are, a lot of those are generated through the building department. In our code departments, there's things that are out of code or out of compliance. We have the ability to charge a fine and forfeiture after going through a magistrate process that would allow for those dollars. So we're proposing that $82,000 will come in this year. And you'll be able to see later on that we've superseded that this past fiscal year up until this point. Okay, we should be on page 11 now, the general fund revenue by type. Again, this is the same information, but given to you in a bar graph. Okay. Now this next graph, should be on page 12, is the expenditure side of the general fund. This again lists all of the departments and what percentages of the total 100% that each department or each division of the city budget makes out. And it pretty much speaks for itself. Roads and streets, you might ask yourself, why is so much associated with roads and streets? Because there's a lot associated with roads and streets. We, that's our biggest department, it comes in the form of public works. And we have more employees in that department and division than we have in any others. And we also have some other additional expenditures coming out of that department. And you may ask yourself, we see that we have two different categories for Recreation Department. One Recreation Department is the city's Recreation Department. And the other component is the county's Recreation Department that they fund the city at for programs that we operate here. And along with that is an allocation for the parks that's within the city limits. This does not include unincorporated ancillary parks that we find in and around our community, around our communities. Okay. 13 again is a, another bar graph illustration of what slide 12 suggests, these are expenditures by department. And our next slide is slide 14. It gives a overview of some of the detail as it relates to personnel and operational costs. Each department or division of the city has a personnel cost associated with it. And with those costs, let me pull that up now. We have the personnel service cost, the numbers that you see there is reflective of not only the salaries, but also the benefits. So the total personnel service costs are included in those numbers. Give me a second, I'm going to find. Actually looking, it's a good place now to give you the FTE in each one of those departments. Give me one second here. Okay. I'll come back to that, I thought I had it handy, but I'll find that one. Okay. And the operational cost is just that, that's what it takes on an annual basis or proposed for this next fiscal year to operate those different departments. So there's a tremendous amount of categories under the operational cost that you'll get a breakdown of. Is that the last page?
Sixteen.
I guess fifteen, sixteen.
Sixteen.
Give me one second here.
Do you have it? You can just move.
Yeah.
Sixteen and seventeen.
Okay. We've mentioned a minute ago, what impacts the expenditures, how do expenditures increase? We talked about inflationary trends, with inflation impacts, technology concerns, some of the things that we may have to upgrade or improve throughout the budget cycle from a technological standpoint. There's an increased demand for service. Anything that may have an impact that requires us to have a demand for service. I know a lot of times you see this during storm season, hurricanes may impact a city. Obviously, you apply for funds through FEMA, but a lot of times those funds, you have to spend dollars at that moment and look for opportunities to either be reimbursed or provide a grant service for that. It's just one example, there's a demand for service that sometimes impact. The cost of energy and fuel that fluctuate, that can go up and that can go down, most of the time is going up, so we have to compensate for that. And what we are proposing is based on history. We not only look at previous year, we look at the previous maybe three to five years and taking consideration everything that's going on around us before we make projections for the upcoming year. Supply chain issues, we saw a lot of this during COVID, when you just couldn't get items. So a lot of times you have to spend more when you did, when it were made available. So those are some of the things that we learned, especially through COVID, that they can have a major impact on our expenditures. So as I mentioned, all of these items could drive the economy into recession resulting in reduced tax revenues as well. If we got a reduction in tax revenues, some of the things that we talked about earlier, some of those revenues that we get in through cost sharing and other means, they can be impacted as well. We'll talk a little bit about our, some of the things that the commission, through cert tax dollars, has either suggested or recommended, and it's not only for this year, but previous years. I have a compilation of all of our cert tax projects since the inception. And and a lot of these have been completed. I know there were some questions about, and I'll just give you some of the project names dating back from fiscal year 2017 that we've actually utilized cert tax dollars for. And then I'll talk about what's projected for '24 and '25 and be able to give a balance of those dollars. In 2017, city used cert tax dollars for entryway sign, Bacon Point Road, restripping of Laramo Road and lift station improvements, parks and recreation improvements, Old Polk High School, MLK Park improvements, Commissioners Park renovations, sidewalk improvements, et cetera, et cetera. So what happens after every year, we make a proposal for future year cert tax projects. And that's done through the county's the county's process, and I'll give you, I gave you some examples of past projects, and I'll be able to give you an update of what was, what proposed for this year.
Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, when you said MLK?
Yes, under 2017, I can give you a breakdown of what was proposed in 2017 for MLK. It was proposed to playground equipment replace, baseball field improvements and renovations, parking lot resurfacing, restriping, safety lighting fence and repair, sidewalks and walking trails. This particular one has not been completed, it was proposed in 2017, but it's one of those that we're working on through grant and potential use of cert tax dollars to bring to fruition this upcoming year, as listed in your packets.
So the ones that you're giving us, are these ones you're saying that has been completed, or are these ones that we're working?
Some have been completed, all have not been completed. I was just explaining the process, a lot of the ones that are not completed, based on the city's priority, they're either carried over for future years or completed within the next year. One that was complete was the restriping of Laramo Road in stormwater that occurred in 2017. And this project provided for traffic control and increased visibility and safer conditions for drivers and pedestrians in the main corridor of a high school, middle and elementary school. And it also had some thermal stripping. That project cost, what was that, $13,500. And that one was completed. Another one that's completed was restripe, or did that get a carryover? Okay. One was proposed in 2021. It was continuation of that project as well. A few dollars that hadn't been spent, but it was completed in 2021. Okay. These are some of the projects, the categories of projects for cert tax dollars for '24, '25, as outlined on slide 17. This what we're allowed to do, renovate, rehabilitate and renovate capital expenditure or fixed capital associated with construction, reconstruction or improvement. We also have the ability to use broadband in terms of fiber optics for the Marina and Sports Complex with wireless access points. Park and Recreation Campus Improvement, some of the things that we started preliminarily through a RFP process will complete next fiscal year that's associated with the Parks and Rec Complex. I mean, talking for some time now about redoing the roof over on the administration building. And the senior building also is in need of repair. And then there's an opportunity to do sidewalk replacement and construction. And then some of the other things that we listed here is Recreation and the Cemetery. And slide 19 gives you a breakdown of the capital projects for this upcoming fiscal year. And it gives you it actually, I'm going to pass this down, it gives you you take one and pass it down. That's an update to what you have here. Okay. Barfield Highway Reconstruction, as you know, is funded by FDOT and Palm Beach County Water Utility. It's 4.5 million award from DOT, you know, 1 million from Palm Beach County. And it's 95.50% completed, with a scheduled completion date of September 24, which will be completed prior to the beginning of next fiscal year. We just wanted to provide that, since it's so close to the end of this fiscal year, we wanted to put that project in. McClure Road Reconstruction Design, as of June, it's 60% complete design. And the total award for that, the combination from DOT and Palm Beach County Water Utility, is $933,943. So once design is complete, we'll put this out for bid for construction. And this project is scheduled to be completed June of '25, so it'll be completed within next fiscal year. Again, it's at 60% complete now from the design standpoint. The next one is the East Lake Village Stormwater Improvement Project. That's final completion, and everything will be closed out in September of this year. MLK Park Improvements, that's a grant from DEP, it's 10% complete at this point. And the award is $250,000. And the award is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar award from DEP with a twenty thousand dollar match from the City of Polk. And this is scheduled to be completed fiscal year 2025. The next one is the Marina Campground Improvement through ARC or funding and scheduled for final completion. It's completed January of this year at the budgeted amount. And Commissioner of Parks Splash Pad, that was completed as well, March of twenty-four.
I would add though that this didn't come from cert tax dollars. So some type of footnote adjustment at least be referenced there.
Okay.
So you're saying, Mayor Bab, that was from the Sugar Mill?
You had Sugar who paid the cost of fixing the.
Okay.
It was projected to be paid for cert tax, but we found another source.
You're correct. Thanks for the correction there.
Mr. Jackson, do you know how much did we get in cert tax dollars last year for twenty-three, twenty-four?
How much for last year? You give me a minute. Could you, could you look that up real quick for me and then we'll be able to give you the exact number? Yeah, we'll give it to you before we finish up. And the. The second part of slide nineteen deals with the discretionary cert tax projects. That's slated for this upcoming year. Sidewalks, walkway improvements, remainder of phase one. Parks and Recreation Building, as discussed a minute ago, with a lot of it being targeted at roof repair and improvements for both the recreational administration building and also the senior wing of the, of the Parks and Rec property as well. The Marina Campground Improvement, repairs of Marina Campground. Been meeting with campground staff and I think I may have alluded to it maybe about a month and a half, two months ago. We are assessing all of the, all of the sites that are not operational now. And we're putting, putting them on a three phased repair and, and maintenance schedule. We've identified preliminarily maybe sixteen to eighteen that can be relatively repaired with very few dollars. It's nothing that's really major. There's some things that happened on the onset when the, when the other operation left that wasn't completed, but we're, we're seeing to think that a third, sixteen to eighteen can be repaired in relatively short period of time with not too much money. And then there's a category that's following that, which is a little bit more expensive and we're kind of having that maybe twenty, twenty-five or in that next category. And then the balance of what's not working now will be in the third phase, which will cost a little bit more and may go over into fiscal year twenty-six. But that's the plan to strategically bring them on board with the idea as they come on board and develop, we're able to rent them out, derive revenue. And if that revenue picks up at the point where we're hoping that it does, even if it's seasonal now, it'll put a, a revenue boost in the arm of, of that department. That will allow, maybe allow for those other renovations on the end to happen a lot quicker. So that's, that's a goal. There's also a need for LED lighting. We're looking to make sure that that's in place. We've had some quotes for that. We just need to have those quotes updated and placed in a situation where that can become a reality. You hear a lot about security and fencing. Over the last couple of weeks, I've had an opportunity to work specifically with security and, and making some suggestions and recommendations. Again, in the past, there was quotes provided for making the gates stronger and increasing the height of the gates. And also to re-lock and re-pad some of the entry gates with key pads that could be used by those that are camp, camping at the facility and hopefully not share it to the community in a way that, you know, that's not allowed right now. So I've asked staff to provide me with those quotes that the originals, fencing quotes that came in. I'll, I'll be reviewing those and making recommendations to have that increase as well. And, and also if it fits within the budget as proposed, there may be an opportunity to do an RFP for a security arm to be housed in, at the campground and Marina during peak hours after the city staff is gone. So we're looking from anywhere between from five to nine during the week. And on Sundays, maybe from twelve to nine. That's, the Sundays are the days when no staff is there at all in terms of on, on site. So those are some of the things that we'll probably be coming back to you. I think it's a situation, there's also an opportunity through the Sheriff's Department to hire someone to be there from the Sheriff's Department. But I'm probably gonna balance the both and, and come up with a suggestion and recommendation to you that will allow us to make sure that facility is as secure as possible. We'll continue to work with the community to inform. As a matter of fact, we've, over the last week or so, we've, we've had to reposition some of the no trespassing signs that we, we're partnering with, with the Sheriff's Department now to make sure that they're enforceable when there, when there's a need to enforce. Obviously, we don't want to arrest kids or cause kids to, to develop a record, but we'll continue to talk with them and encourage them through their parents to kind of follow the system that we have in place. So it's not disruptive in causing, in ki, causing kids to be introduced to the juvenile system. So we're really working, it's, it's a balancing act. So, but if we're able to continue to do projects, as I referenced last commission meeting, if we're able to do ongoing projects for the community, I think that's, that goes a long way to kind of help alleviate some of the idle play and idle time that our kids have. Entryway Signs is one of the other projects that we have slated. I'm working with the city attorney to develop a process that we can develop an RFP to have that to go out for Seventh Street in South Lake. Be one of, another one of our entryways. It'll be similar to the one we have already in place. And there's a need for upgrades of the software at the cemetery right now that the, a record keeping is antiquated. And there's a need to upgrade the IT and the software for that apartment. And overall, through the city, there's a need for informational technology to be upgraded. And Public Works, there's a need for equipment. A lot of the things that are germane to Public Works Department, we just don't have it here. And it becomes difficult at times to do certain functions under the Public Works Department without having the adequate equipment. So recognize that and we're looking at different options where there's an ability not to maybe lease, own or purchase outright, develop partnerships that will allow others to maybe make things available at a decent price or either through donation until we're able to, to do anything different. So with that, that's it. Again, we have Mr. Martin here. If there's any specific questions. Were you able to find the question related to cert tax for this past fiscal year? Yes, you can go ahead.
The budgeted cert tax for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And as of June, we received three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven fifty-eight, which was a seventy-four percent of that budgeted amount.
Mr. Joseph, would you, would you happen to have a copy of the FTE that you provided for me? Some kind of way we're looking at, the one that gives a total number of FTEs across? Okay, if you, if you could share that.
Mr. City Manager, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On page nineteen, under Parks and Rec for repairs and improvement, does that also include, or has the roof at the cafeteria been repaired yet? Do you know?
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't improve, okay.
Okay, real quick. So you'll have this, again, this is FTE across departments. There's in the city commission, obviously, it's, it's five of you guys. The city manager, there's two positions. Okay, it's, it's five within the city commission. That includes the five of you. The city manager, there's two positions. One now, but it'll be two, looking to hire an administrative assistant this upcoming fiscal year. City clerk, there's one position. Finance, there's four. Human resources, there's one. Protective inspections, there's four. Road and streets, which includes public works, is nine and a half positions. Community development, there's one. Under the city's Recreation Department, there's seven. The county funds two positions under the Recreation Department. The Marina Campground, there's point five, and I'll kind of explain that to you in a minute. In the cemetery, there's currently two.
Are public works cut in the grass there? How they operate with only two staff?
At the cemetery? Yes, we, we, we share within the cemetery. There's two that's paid out of the cemetery line item. But we actually have between four and five that's working there and they share it through the Public Works Department.
What's protective inspections? Is that code enforcement?
Yes.
Do we have four?
Yeah, and building and planning and zoning. So you have two in each.
So we have four people in finance right now? Or is that what we're budgeting for four people?
We have, we have four.
So are we gonna put in, in the budget, are we gonna put like a park ranger or someone for the Marina? Cause I know this is our budget and that's what we're discussing now. So are we gonna put that in the budget anywhere? For a park ranger while we're on the budget?
It's, if that's the pleasure of the commission. At the Parks Department? Marina Campground is point five, but actually there's, there's a full position because that person is paid out of, also out of the different, out of roads and streets. Half her salaries in one area and others the other. You can definitely make that suggestion and, and we'll, we'll adjust that accordingly. But I would, as I mentioned earlier, that's one consideration. The other consideration is a combination of the things that I mentioned, increasing the security lighting and possibly going out for a, a bid for security. So if there's a park ranger, then more than likely those other, those other structural things will happen, but it'll probably be difficult to outsource for security if that was the case. So you have to ask yourself if you're getting, are you getting more for your bang by having a park ranger? That are security. The park ranger will have other functions, obviously, but the security part will still, you still, you still have that concern with security.
I guess I was only asking because, you know, there's been a concern that the restrooms are not open on the weekend. So I guess that's why I was asking that question. So with the person that, or the security that you're hiring, will the restrooms on the weekend be open or available when families are out? I guess that's why I was asking that question.
A big part of the reasons why. And I'm not sure exactly which restrooms you're referencing because.
Well, when they were going to Commissioner Park, they were saying that the restrooms were being closed on the weekend. So I guess that's why I was thinking about park ranger because at least someone can be there to watch and open and close the restrooms when it's, you know, dark fall so that it don't mess up the restroom.
Yes. Yes, that's, to answer your question, yes. If we have security, then the, the likelihood, I'm not saying it won't happen, but the likelihood of things being destroyed will, will be minimized. We just had an incident maybe two weeks ago where, and you found a lot of the costs associated with open bathrooms where there's the sinks and the, the equipment is, is destroyed. And, and, and that's something that we've, and just looking at historical record, a lot of it has happened in all of the parks. So.
Do we have a camera system at any of our parks?
We have a camera system at the Marina, but it's not fully functional now. And that's one of the things that we, that we plan to do and improve with the security component, piece of it as well. Again, we, we've, we've had quotes and we've had some things done. But it's never followed through or completed. So.
My, my take on the park ranger and security, it looks like we need both. I know our budget is not a zero rate, that we can probably get both. But because there are things, security is just security.
Sure.
But there's things that happens over the weekends that you have to call someone out to manage or to see that happens and security is gonna be there just for, you know, the safety of the, of the Marina and the campground. So if, if we can, I don't know, you know, I don't know what the cost would be, you know, for security or for, what would be for the park ranger. But if it can work, you know, within the budget, to me, you really need, you know, both.
Okay.
Even if we try doing both, you can do maybe one or the other half a part-time versus a four-hour shift for both. And are we considering the dock master position? And I'm looking at that not only as a service for the boaters, but as a income generating maneuver. That person should be there to attract business, advertise and whatever need to be done to increase the revenue there.
Yes, sir.
I just wondered if we at least looking at that possibility in this upcoming budget.
It's, we, we don't have dollars allocated for it now, but this is an opportunity if, just as if you referenced a minute ago about the park ranger, this is an opportunity. No, it's, we, we don't have dollars allocated for it now, but this is an opportunity, if, just as if you referenced a minute ago about the park ranger, this is an opportunity. You still have an opportunity to, to recommend that, and we'll develop a budget based on it, based on your direction.
Just my thought too, we were talking about the repairs and stuff on the campground. Once we get those things done and be able to generate funding, could that help offset some of the
Absolutely.
salaries for those positions?
Absolutely.
And I'm gonna go back to the dock ranger, dock master. Even if we do it on a part-time basis, initially to get it going, I think it will be a worthwhile service to at least consider or look at budgeting for. And that's just one individual, but I don't know how the community, uh, commission as a whole feel, but I think it would be a great asset. We read on it late.
I want to too.
But no dock master.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so if I, if I can get conceptual approval for direction, I'll, I'll, we'll work these positions, whether it's part-time or full-time into the budget before it's finalized, and I bring it back to you.
I think, um, just, sometimes it helps to have those deterrents, we need more cameras around the city anyway. So I think that's definitely something, um, we can have a, a nice camera system around the city, we need those in different places.
Okay.
And I just have one more question, Mr. Jackson. I noticed, um, the four, the forty-five positions, I noticed we don't have custodians for the city. Now, I know we do have the AARP workers, but if we don't have the AARP workers, who's going to be responsible for maintaining and keeping the city up? Because I noticed that, um, we don't have any of those in our budget.
Okay, I think there was a custodian position that's vacant. Yeah, I think we have a vacant position for custodian, and we can definitely.
And where would that follow up under the budget, because I notice it's not here on what you're proposing either.
If I'm not mistaken, I think that custodian position, that was for cleaning up the office space. That was on cleaning these, uh, city hall and the city commission chamber, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that was was the.
Yes, at once upon a time, and then when AR, AARP came in, they took on the role of, of cleaning those, so it was really no need to continue to budget that when that was being offset with AARP. Are, are you envisioning another role?
No, I was just wondering if they're not, if they decide, you know what I'm saying? And I know when they come, I don't know how it works, what positions they offer them, but if they don't want to do that, and they want to do something else, I'm just saying, where would the city be left?
I think a lot of.
Not necessarily, if they don't want to clean, they don't have to clean.
Or is that a bridge we cross when we get there?
Yeah.
If we get there.
We, we're not, we're not restricting them, I shouldn't say, well, I don't think we're restricting them to the, to services, I think what we do, we restrict them to categories that they can be supervised in. So if we have someone to supervise, and we do, we have, I think it's a total of four men, that, that helps quite a bit in non-custodial type work. They do a lot with parks and rec, with the fields, with maintaining the facilities. So there's, there's an opportunity to do more than just cleaning, but if there's, just say, for instance, if we have a, an applicant, an applicant that's interested in learning more about code enforcement, we're, we're not against having that AARP person to participate in our code department. So it's just the way that they are introduced and brought onto the city is, is how we best use them and utilize them. So we're not, we're not against that at all, both existing or future.
Also, the electronic marquee, we're probably one of the only cities that I'm aware of that don't have electronic marquee. Even if we put one at the city hall, even in the future when we have to move it, it can be moved in a different location. So I'm hoping that that will be part of our budget, whether capital improvement or whatever, but I think that's, uh, again, a worthwhile project to undertake.
Yes, sir, and you're, you're absolutely right, and let me apologize for not giving you the, the, the most current version of the capital projects, that is included. And as a part of the overall entry sign, in that sign, we're looking to develop an RFP to have both of those completed within this fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year. So that's, that's on the list.
I don't know if it's under there, and lastly, the old chamber building, we still have a blue car parked there, and we're really trying to get an image where we're more attractive appealing as we enter our community or ride around our community. And also the, the public works building, I know we're talking about possibly selling that for a economic development or project for a, a, a vendor. But I think just an upkeep of that facility, even if we put a paint or coat on it, I don't think it's a waste of money because when you look at it, it may be another year or two before that prospect is really ready to move forward on possibly purchasing that building. So I'm looking at maybe a coat of paint and just the general brown areas of it. We got a lot of equipment over there, and it just looks so unsightly when I look over that place. So those just one or two areas that we can at least consider doing something.
Yes, sir, uh, just for your information, I've, I've, I've received quotes, and we're anticipating receiving additional quotes for the chamber building. We actually went in maybe a month and a half ago and took a look to get an assessment on what, what's needed and what could be done. I know it was started a while back, but the total building was not renovated. So we have quotes that's coming in to have that completely renovated, to include the, the roof. And I was at public works last week, some of the same questions I met with supervisors there, namely Mr. Buxton, and we went over some things that will improve the overall look and ambience of, of that building. So, yes, sir, and commission, we're, we're definitely aware of these things, and we're developing plans to, to have all of what you mentioned addressed to some degree. The other part of it is that, and this is potentially down the road, but with your direction, there's an opportunity through Solid Waste Authority to even this upcoming fiscal year for demolition dollars to have that building demolished. So if that becomes your desire, or from an economic development standpoint, if it yields more to not have it there and to relocate back to the, the original public works department, we're looking to get some projections on what it will take to have that facility reopen around, over by the Rim Canal. So that's an option as well.
And I think too, the chamber building, old chamber could actually be used as a resource facility for us that we can assist small business doing their carpeting, or whatever they may need. Some assistance with, and actually even community and economic development could move over in that area and have a dual use of that facility. Just kind of thinking of the time.
Okay. Well, that, that's it, if there's no other questions, we'll get a chance to do a, a review of the third quarter during the commission meeting. But as it stands now, that's, that's all for the, the workshop. And I've, I've gathered your notes and I've made note, and when you see proposed budget again, it'll, it'll take in consideration all that I've heard tonight.
Workshop officially adjourned at six oh one, and we are reconvened by regular commission meeting in two minutes.
I call this regular meeting of the Polk City Commission Tuesday, August the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, to order at six oh seven P.M. Will you please stand for the invocation provided by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, God, we come before you today, God, to say thank you for another day. Father God, as we gather here tonight, God, to do the business of the city, God, we ask you, God, that you give us guidance, and God, you give us wisdom, oh God. Father God, we ask, God, that you bless this city, oh God, bless our city staff, God, bless our citizens of this city, oh God. Bless us as we move forward, oh God, we can only do it, God, with your help. So, God, we ask you, God, look upon us and be with us and bless us, in Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, the living, and the spiritual.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Baugh.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPearson.
Present.
Interim City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Present.
Acting City Clerk, present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you commissioners, thank you staff, and most importantly, thank our listening audience for being here today to participate in our regular scheduled meeting of it. At this time, we will follow our agenda. First item on the agenda is the, are there any changes to the agenda, City Managers?
Uh, changes, Mayor and Commission, but I would ask for your consideration of reordering the presentations. As it stands now, we'd like to reorder number one and two, become, uh, Oak Coast Development to be fourth. Third quarter financial report to be third. Mayor's proclamation to be first, and proclamation declaring September twenty-twenty-four as National Recovery Month to be second.
City Commission hearing the request from the city manager to rearrange just slightly the agenda with those items listed as he presented, what would be your pleasure?
Mayor Baugh, I move to accept the agenda with the changes, um, the change in order, Mayor's proclamation first. Uh, proclamation which is declaring September twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four as National Recovery Month as second. Third, third quarter financial report, and Oak Coast Development fourth.
As second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly second by Commissioner Cowan-Williams that we, self our agenda as presented with the following changes that was stated. Call for question. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPearson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Baugh?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you commissioners, motion passed on a unanimous vote, unanimous vote. Now we move to presentation, proclamation, public service announcement, public comments, agenda items only for public comments at this time. City Clerk, at this time, do we have any public comments card completed?
We have one, uh, public service announcement by Ms. Christine Bolden.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm here representing for Hoke Elementary School. And the reason I'm here is to invite this commission and, and. And, uh, the reason I'm here is to invite this commission and administration and our residents into our school to support our mission and vision. We're all here for the children, but we do need support. Uh, I just wanted to share some of the events that are coming up. And I hope to see you all come out and support those events and participate. Uh, September is Hispanic Heritage Month. And also Suicide Preventive Month. So at the school, we'll be doing activities related to both, uh, those important, um, events. And on Wednesday, September fourth, we will have our site and our open house. So if you have a child attending for Polk Elementary, or if you are an interested resident and want to make a difference in this community, we would really love to see you there. Uh, site starts at four thirty and the open house starts at five thirty. Uh, Wednesday, September eleventh, is our monthly chat. We do a Zoom where we talk to our parents. They'll have a link sent home through Dojo. They'll have a link to join the conversation. And we really want to have a good relationship with our parents. We want to keep them informed. We want to tell them, uh, about, uh, things that's going on in this school. And how they can support their child and how they can support their, uh, students. So we do that once a month, usually every, uh, second Tuesday. So our first one will be Wednesday, September eleventh. And the last thing I want to share with you all for the event for September is our Take Your Dad to School Day. That will be Thursday, September nineteenth. So if you are a dad, uh, someone who's taking the place of a dad in a child's life, we would love to see you there. This commission has supported us every year since I've been, uh, helping out with that initiative. The mayor has been there, uh, to support that and we really, really, really appreciate that. So we're looking forward to you all coming. And if you have any suggestions on how we can improve over next year, you want to drop a, you know, you know, an email, we would definitely, uh, appreciate that. So those are the events that are coming up, uh, for September. And we really, really want to see our parents there. Are there any questions? Okay. Uh, one issue that we do have is, uh, transparency. So we are working with Bridges at Polk to come up with some strategies to help, um, remediate that issue. So we want to make sure, ever since COVID, really, it's been kind of difficult to get the children to school on time and get them there. So we know that that is important and that's one of our initiatives that we're working on. So we may be coming back to you all later on for some support with that issue. Okay? Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have another public service announcement, uh, by Annie and I feel.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Um, for those who don't know me, my name is Annie Iffel, the Director of Healthy Glades. It's that time of the year again. Where Healthy Glades is offering our grants, our mini-grants. So for those who are not familiar, since two thousand nineteen, we have been offering grants to residents. Uh, nonprofit organizations and grassroots groups, um, grants up to three thousand dollars to implement projects, uh, specifically for the Glades community. So we're getting ready to kick off our grant season again. This year I do have flyers. We're doing it a little different than what we've done in the past. Because what we're trying to do is we're trying to prepare our community to be ready to apply for other grants outside of just Healthy Glades grants. There are monies available in the, um, throughout Palm Beach County that we can tap into and bring, uh, resources back to our community. So this year, one of the things we're doing is we're doing a mandatory, um, grant writing workshop. One of the things we realized is that, uh, a lot of our residents and folks who have never done a grant before, they struggle with completing the application. And so, and we're also shifting our application from paper to, uh, uh, entering it through a portal. Because if you try to apply for funding from other funders, they're not using paper anymore. So one of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to build resident capacity, community capacity, so that they are prepared. I also want to say thank you to, uh, interim manager, uh, Jackson and Parks Rec for allowing us to use the Marina Conference Room. They were, we're going to start those workshops September ninth. It's a five-week session. It's, um, it's on Monday from five thirty to seven. And so we'll be doing those workshops and we have, we have invited funders from Palm Beach County, the actual funders, that's going to provide the workshops and train, um, the residents in our community. So if you're interested in the workshops, please come. Even if you already have applied for, uh, grants before and stuff, it doesn't hurt to get refreshers. Now, to apply for the Healthy Glades grant, you have to have not received a grant in the past. That's, we're going to be doing that, uh, uh, a separate set of opportunities for our past awardees. This is for anybody who's never been awarded. Or who has applied and never been awarded. So, um, you, but you do have to complete the five workshops in order to be eligible to submit an application for the grant this year. So that's something new. So I will put some in the back. Um, Vice Mayor Mervin, you can pass these to the commission. If y'all can help get the word, word out, one of the things that we're doing, well, I'm being intentional in terms of trying to, uh, to bring it in Polk. And the reason why I'm doing it, because we've been doing this since two thousand nineteen and we've had folks that have been awarded, but not that many from Polk. And I wanted to give that opportunity to try to provide as much information and resources I can, so that we can get more folks to apply and more folks to get awarded. I'm looking at Ms. Bolden because Ms. Bolden happened to be one of my past new grant awardees. Kareem, uh, Kareem Murray was one of our past awardees as well. So, um, please pass the word, please get the word out, and we'll be starting those classes on September ninth. And I'll put these in the backs.
Are they going to be at the Marina?
Yeah, at Polk Marina Conference Room, yes, ma'am. Thanks again.
That was the last presenter.
That was.
Now we'll move to presentations. Uh, the first one would be the Mayor Proclamation expressing a sympathy for former Mayor J. P. Sasser. We have our City Attorney read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation and expression of sympathy, former Mayor James Paul J. P. Sasser. Whereas the residents of Polk with heavy hearts are still very proud to recognize the life and valuable contributions of former Mayor James Paul J. P. Sasser. And whereas J. P. Sasser's journey began with his birth to Paul and Dora Sasser, who predeceased him. He was raised by his loving sisters, Faith Sasser and Penny Crosby, a family that instilled in him the values of service and community. And whereas he graduated from Glades Day School in nineteen seventy-three and studied at Stetson University. And whereas after finalizing his studies, he joined the Peace Corps in Swaziland, Africa, where he taught biology and agriculture. And whereas J. P. Sasser's return to Polk was not just a homecoming, but a decision to join his family in business. And to make a positive impact in the community he cherished, a commitment he upheld with unwavering dedication. And whereas he served with unwavering dedication as mayor from two thousand two to two thousand eight and two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen. Served as a Director of the Palm Beach County Human Rights Council and was a board member at One Florida Foundation. And was widely known as a selfless public servant. And whereas above all, J. P. was known for his advocacy for animal welfare. And deep interest in all things automotive. And whereas on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, the Lord called J. C., J. P. Sasser home. Leaving a sense of loss in our community, he will truly be missed. Now therefore, be it resolved by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Polk. I do hereby extend our deepest sympathy to the family and friends of former Mayor J. P. Sasser. Done this seventh day of August, two thousand and twenty-four. Keith W. Bab, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll make sure that the city, uh, actually present this proclamation to the family of J. P. Sasser. Next, we have a proclamation declaring September two thousand twenty-four as National Recovery Month. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, whereas everyday millions of Americans prove that recovery from alcohol and substance use disorders is, is possible. Substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles. And lead rewarding lives in recovery. Recovery Month spreads the message that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover. And whereas we celebrate the impactful partnership with Rebel Recovery Florida, which provides essential mobile health and peer recovery support. Their services, including hygiene and personal care supplies, risk reduction information, infectious disease testing, and navigation to care. Are instrumental in preventing the spread of infectious diseases. And whereas Rebel Recovery Florida is an accredited recovery community organization. That offers low-barrier certified peer services with recovery support services, education, and advocacy to people impacted by drug use. And those living with or at risk of infectious disease. And whereas we recognize the crucial role of peer support in the recovery journey of individuals affected by substance use or mental health issues. Peer support through shared understanding, respect, and mutual empowerment supports all pathways to recovery and celebrates any positive change. And whereas the shared lived experience of peer support gives hope and increases motivation and engagement in recovery-based activities. By being role models, developing coping skills, facilitating community reintegration, connecting to community-based supports, resources, and treatment services. And whereas Rebel Recovery encourages and supports local individuals with lived experience of substance use. And/or mental health disorders to become recovery supports in their communities by providing the education and supervision needed to become certified recovery peer specialists. And whereas Rebel Recovery has made a significant impact, having served two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine participants. Provided seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five hours of community outreach yearly, distributed thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-eight Narcon kits. And reported two thousand one hundred and twenty-two overdose reversals since two thousand seventeen. Since two thousand twenty-one, they have facilitated the safe disposal of two hundred and six thousand nine hundred and sixty-two used syringes. Distributed one hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and six sterile units and provided mobile syringes and health services to seven hundred and twenty-nine participants. And whereas Rebel Recovery Florida remains a champion for the improved health of people who use drugs. Recognition for all people to be treated with dignity, respect, compassion, and the right of equitable access to a person-centered, recovery-oriented system of care. Through its robust services, collaborative programs, and our partnership with the City of Polk and through Palm Beach County. And whereas the City of Polk's recognition of Recovery Month is a crucial step in improving the lives of those affected by substance use disorders. By raising awareness of this disease and educating the community about prevention, treatment, and recovery resources that are available. The City of Polk is playing a vital role in this important cause, making our community feel valued and integral in the recovery process. Now therefore, I, Keith Bab, Junior, Mayor of the City of Polk, and on behalf of the City Commission. Recognize the value Rebel Recovery peer specialists and recovery support services bring to our community. And in so doing, hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-four as National Recovery Month. An official recognition whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of Polk to be affixed this twenty-seventh day of August, two thousand twenty-four. Mayor Keith Bab, Junior, Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Derek Bolden, Commissioner Sanqueta Cowan-Williams, and Commissioner Everett McPherson.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Commissioner, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption and acceptance of this proclamation.
Mayor Bab, I make a motion that we will accept the proclamation to Rebel Recovery.
A second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Sanqueta Cowan-Williams. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Are there anyone from those two organizations here?
Mr. Mercedes is here on behalf of Rebel Recovery to receive proclamation tonight.
Okay. And also Commissioners, could someone come with me? Would y'all come with me so we can present this proclamation? On behalf of the Polk City Commission itself, as the mayor, Commissioner Everett McPherson Senior, Commissioner Vice Mayor Clara Mervin. Commissioner of Sanqueta Cowan-Williams, Commissioner Derek Bolden. It's such an honor to present this proclamation to this organization on behalf of all the outstanding services we all do and provide. And at this time, I have Commissioner Howard Officially William officially present proclamation.
On behalf of the City of Polk, I present this proclamation to Rebel Recovery.
As an organization, we want to thank you for your support over the past couple of years and getting, um, you know, the memorandum of understanding and everything situated. Since, uh, we opened up the office over in Beale Glade, we've been able to get six Polk residents into inpatient treatment. And various others, we've linked them to, uh, providing them with clothing, food, um, bus passes for transportation. As the proclamation stated, that, you know, it's our goal to help improve their lives ever so slightly, so they can motivate them and understand that, you know. They are worthy of better. And, you know, that there is a light at the end of the tunnel and there is always room for improvement. And our organization works with individuals right wherever it is that they're at, whether it's right down the sidewalk. Or, you know, um, or on their way, or on their way to the store. Um, and me speaking any further just kind of dims the light on the type of work that my coworker, like Ronnie does. Uh, Ronnie Hayes and, uh, Mr. Coach Ricky Limons, um, at Polk High School. I know right now he's out there coaching. Um, but we appreciate the work that they do more than anything because they're the ones that are out here, um, day in and day out. Um, and a lot of times working late nights to be able to find individuals to continue to link them to services. Um, and we look forward to partnering with, with you all. And I'll, I'll let Ronnie give, uh, you know, a few words about her experiences with, uh, working with individuals and things like that and the impact that it's had on you, helping everybody.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dean. Well, most of these guys know I'm not from here. I'm from Milwaukee. However, I've been here nine years. And I've come to grow in, uh, Polk. And because I've already been in the, um, area in, uh, how should I say this, working with my brother-in-law, I've gotten to know a lot of people. And through that, it just came easy. And through that, it just came easy, you know? I've been there, done that, so I understand. I've grown from that, so I have the experience to be able to tell them you could do it. And what really, really, I guess, affected me a lot was that they felt that they were in despair, like, it's over, it's not over, it's not over. You can keep going, you know? Look at me. You can keep going. You might not know my history, but you can keep going. I've been there, done that, and it's not the end. As long as you have the willpower, you can make it through. And it's pretty much where I'm at with it, so. And what I gotta say, though, even for me not to be from here, they trust me. They trust me, they go get other people that say, she can help you, she can help you. And I'm not even from here. The same way they do Rick, they do me. So I get chills by saying that because I feel the love from the people. And that's, I don't like to call them street people because they're just like us, you know what I mean? So that's how I treat them. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to continuing to partner with you. We have another organization that's going to be coming in. They're opening up an office and they provide individual and group therapy as well as providing people access to mental health medication as well. And we'll be bringing them to the meetings in the future as well to collaborate with you all. If any time in the future you find a space where we can meet with any of the individuals here, we, because we like, we're planning on doing group sessions over in the Belle Glade location. If you have any office space that you can spare us in the future to be able to meet with anywhere from five to six people, we'll bring them, you know, pizza and beverages so we can just, you know, get them, get them, get them from the elements, get them out of the elements and, you know, be able to have a conversation with them and help them understand that they have somewhere that they can go. So we look forward to hearing from any one of you that's willing to support such matter. We're not asking for like a big space or anything like that, but if that, if that's possible, it was something that we would really greatly appreciate and it will help elevate and even accelerate the process of individuals having a rallying point to be able to meet with, with everybody that we have available to them.
Do you have any cards, Mr. Mercedes?
I have.
Okay.
And to piggyback off that, Mr. Jackson, I was talking to Ronnie at another meeting we was at and we were talking about the space and I asked her to talk to you to see, I think, for like once a week or so.
For a couple of hours.
A couple of hours.
Just give them some support because they don't have it over there, over here. Now, we have an office in Belle Glade, but I don't see our people trying to get to Belle Glade. They're going to start over there, so I want to.
We have one small vehicle to transport people from here to there. We've been doing it, but we want to be able for them to be able to stay right here and, you know, and be comfortable in their community and receiving everything that we have.
I'll call you tomorrow to get your card, Ms. Ronnie.
I look forward to it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Our next two presenters are going to be introduced by our City Manager at this time.
Okay, we have the third quarter financial report. We have a, mostly it was provided to you and your backup information. I'll ask Mr. Martin to come up and hit a few highlights for the third quarter. And just keep in mind, this is our financial situations as of June of 2024. And it's a lot of what you, what you had an opportunity to work with and work through during our budget workshop, but it just gives a snap of where we were at June of this year. And as you very well know, we're in our last quarter now, preparing to start things off of fiscal year '25. Mr. Martin?
This is our recovery third quarter, which represents 75%. And the financials are all edited for that period. We go to the next slide, please. And on the general fund, the taxes, we receive 78% of the budget amount. That's approximately 89% of the Alvalo tax. And permit and license fees is 134, so it's very favorable. We see more than budgeted for. The intergovernmental, 41%. There is a bit of concern here and it's due to the J-LAC sanction. The fines and forfeitures is favorable, it's at 155%. And charging services is at 67%. And miscellaneous at 84%. Now, as it relates to the expenditures, most of, most of the departments are favorable. So keep in mind, it's supposed to be at 75%. The Commissioners, the Mayor Commissioners' office is at 48% of the budget. The City Attorney is 75%. The City Clerk at 68%. Yeah, the City Manager at 52%. And financial service, 71. The IT, 77%. Human Resources, HR, 67. The Public and Safety at 83%. Well, it's real narrow. It's at 82% because there's a one-month free period. And the quarter first enforcement at 75%. Community economic development at 46%. And public work at 68% of the budget. Park annuiation, 57. And the PBC, the park is at 60% and park at 66. And the non-departmental, the internal service at 71%. As I mentioned before, the, the impact, the cash flow really is affected by the J-LAC sanction. The third quarter, as of June 30, 2024, the general expenditures exceeded the receipt by $90,209. And the fund balance has not been touched. And this is a breakdown of the cash and the reserve and the suitor. If we move on to the next slide. The first column is the budgeted amount in the year-to-date. And the total revenue is at 57%. And that will, will change as J-LAC sanction, hopefully, the money will be coming in and we'll put in a better situation. But as, also the second allotment for the PPSO in August, as we amended the budget, that will give us a cushion to bring it up to about like, I think it would be 400, $542,000. So that will bring it up. The next slide, please. The expenditures. Basically, this is a, I only did the recap of the percentages of the expenditures. And the total expenditures is really favorable, it's at 77. We're supposed to be at 75, but we are 66, which is, we spend less. And as, the next slide, please. The, the special revenue fund, the revenue side of it is at 74%. However, the expenditures is at 11%.
Any question here? Yeah, has the city been cleared to receive the funding that we was expecting to receive from J-LAC? Is that's done or halfway done or what percentage of that we will be receiving?
Yes, sir. As of the release of, as we received a release from J-LAC, we are, we have received some dollars from FDOT, but we're now in, we've submitted reimbursement requests for the others. Oftentimes, it don't happen as fast as we would like them to, but we're still anticipating, I think it's near $700,000 to come through. We've had approximately 150 to come in, but we're still anticipating those other dollars to come in from not only FDOT, but there are some additional dollars from DEP dollars as well that we're anticipating that will be released. And the whole idea is to have those dollars released as soon as possible. And we call and we check on a weekly basis. And we, we're very optimistic that we'll be receiving most of them very soon.
Next slide, please, the alpha. As we can see here, on the revenue side, we're at 98%. It will be 100% as of September since there is a desire, it's almost, the alpha fund is up, the expenditures is, I think it's about 143,000 left for the minor repairs and some other allocated amount. But the, the total, the revenue is at 98% and overall expenditures at 67%. However, the PPSO is not reflected here since amendment was done in August and this is as of June. Next slide, please, the cap, capital project. The reimbursement for, for this area on the capital project need to be added since it hasn't been requested yet for the year. Expenditures is at 54% of the budgeted amount. The next slide, please. The marina is at 76% of the revenue and expenditures at 79%. And then the cemetery is 58% versus the 75%. Should have been close to 75, this one is a little bit unfavorable. The cemetery expenditures is also 59%. Any questions?
Yeah, are there any major concerns at the finance director that this commission could at least be aware of or concerned about? What pitfalls are there that you see? And I know I'm putting out dirty laundry, but we need to know if there's been anything that you feel is a concern that we need to be addressing.
Yes, there is a cash flow issue. If we can address, it is a concern. It is, it is a concern. And as the City Manager mentioned previously, is in constant contact with FDOT and FDP, including the Department of Revenue, is it willing to releasing funds to the city? But there is a concern, is it willing to the cash flow?
If I may, Mayor, it's been repeated several times, I know since, since I joined with the team here, the fact that you have reimbursable projects, majority of your capital projects are reimbursables, and those that are funding these particular projects are state agencies and state entities. And when the Joint Legislative Audit Committee audited the city and determined that the audits were not, well, excuse me, the audits were not, we were lagging on completing audits, then they have a responsibility from the state end to withhold those funds until we're caught up. As you very well know, we've completed two audits in six months and we're on schedule pending passage of one of the resolutions tonight to begin a third audit and within a seven, eight month period. It's almost unheard of. So, and with doing that, that will allow the city to be caught up on its audits, for lack of a better term. And this whole audit situation, J-LAC situation, will be behind us as a municipality and then we can focus our efforts on developing projects and, and, and programs that will allow us to never return to that position again. And it's encouraging, although it's a concern with cash flow, we can see the end of the tunnel and it's, and it's not a locomotive. So I think we should be encouraged as, we are concerned at this point, but we have some encouraging news that's going to be, that's going to put the city in a better position fiscally.
I just have one question I want to ask. On page seven, under cash management, where it says for the third quarter ended June 30 of 2024, the general fund disperses exceeds the general fund receipts. So can you explain that? Does that mean that we disperse the money, but we don't have the receipts for what we?
We spend more, more than we receive.
Okay.
In addition, comment from the Commission of questions?
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mayor, if I may, our next presenter would be Mr. Michael Snartgrass. I'm going to give a brief commercial before Mr. Snartgrass comes to our front. We want to, the City Commission requested an update some months ago and because of scheduling conflicts and not being able to bring this item to you a couple of months ago, we were finally able to schedule it. I would also ask that we restrict our questions specifically to areas associated with the Everglades Town Home update. I know there's, will be some questions regarding also the daycare component that was originally proposed in that section, in that development. We'll be able to ask those questions, but I will alarm you and City Attorney also as well, request that you do not ask any questions that will allow Mr. Snartgrass to reference or discuss a legal filing that's in place currently at this time. So if we restrict our questions to the update of the project and to include your concerns and questions regarding the daycare center, I think we should be just fine. Want to add anything else?
I think that sums it up, just to be mindful that the matter is in litigation.
I think that sums it up, just to, to be mindful that the matter is in litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Michael Snodgrass, as you most know. I'm the president and CEO of a nonprofit called Oikos Development Corporation. We are the developer of the Everglades Town Home LP. I also brought along Vori Copeland. He's the project manager for the project in case there's any real specific construction questions regarding the site. But I, I believe the, the majority of questions will be around why aren't we building the daycare? And so I wanted to be able to respond. I did provide the city manager just today, I apologize for not getting to you sooner, kind of a outline of where we started and what we've been doing, um, in regards to a bunch of matters, including, including the head start building because that's still, yes, we still want it to, to build it, yes, we still want to move forward. There are some challenges with the funding sources that we were trying to get for it with USDA. But I'll go back to when we actually started. So we started this project in two thousand nineteen. You know, COVID got in the way of a lot of things, as you remember, and so we were not able to get the site plan in place until two thousand twenty-two. We started working with Lutheran Services back in two thousand twenty and wanted to see if there was an interest of them expanding their operations because we would like to, as a nonprofit, our, our mission is to, to serve as many people as we can. And we knew that that was based upon our discussions with them. We knew that that was an actual, uh, area of need according to them that they would like to expand. So we started to pursue, uh, the different funding sources for, for the potential, uh, head start building. So we reached out to USDA. USDA actually came and some of you were on the, we went into the old high school and then we went into, uh, onto the site to discuss with the regional office, the potential of , of funding called the community facilities fund. And they both, for both of them, we said, well, yes, that, that would be a possibility because it, for Pahokee would mean of like a sixty percent grant, um, and forty percent low interest, forty or fifty year loan, uh, to, to help build the building. So we applied as a nonprofit, we're one of the eligible applicants as a nonprofit. We applied back in two thousand twenty-one. USDA because of COVID and whatnot, they sat on, sat on. Finally, in two thousand twenty-three, we had a meeting over again and, uh, city manager Rodney Lucas was at this meeting where we, uh, we all got together and said, okay, why isn't this moving forward? And it's at that point that the USDA said, you know, the application's fine, but the nonprofit us, we're not local enough. And they wanted to see the city be in the position, um, to, to, uh, make the application and own the building. I have no skin in it, you know, I, I, I'm fine with how it works. I just wanted to see it get done. So we worked, presented, uh, Mr. Lucas and MOU where we could actually make the application on behalf of the city. We could work on the project and then, uh, try to move forward. But unfortunately, it never really went very far. I, I understand, or at least he told me before he left that he, he submitted several items and one of which was supposed to be that where there's an MOU where we can make the application again on behalf of the city, um, and, and move it forward. But that's why it's not built at this point. The funding, I think the funding is still there. We're building a head start in another area, um, similar size and we started after, but, um, we're considered more local in, in that area. It all gets down to what USDA office you, you work with. So it's, there's always that aspect of it, but any, any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So are you saying that the city of Pahokee is the reason that we're not moving forward with the, um, because city of Pahokee didn't do what was required in order for us to have the?
Not necessarily. No, it's mainly that, you know, we, we needed something from the city that, that allowed us, just like we wanted something from the city that would allow us to apply for different grants for the old high school. With the community facilities being one of them, but there's also, uh, federal tax, uh, federal historic tax credits, there's other Palm Beach monies, there's other things we could be applying for, you know, because you've got to find, you want to keep your debt down, obviously, so you don't have to, as many grants as you can. But we need to, we do need an MOU from the city in order for us to make that application, so.
So let me just ask a question. So after this information was, um, Mr. Lucas was aware of it, I'm not sure who else was aware of it in the meeting, but after it didn't take place and when you all, I was on the planning and board zoning at that time, and that was part of what you all said that would be a part of it, I'm just trying to understand, why didn't someone come back to this commission to let this commission be aware of that this is what we're needing, it hasn't taken place? And in order for us to uphold our end of the bargain, what we said we would bring to the community, why wasn't brought back to the commission so that the commission and the community can be aware of and the commission could have held the city manager responsible for what they were supposed to do?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, our first point of contact is usually the city manager. And so we, we kept reaching out to him and he kept saying he was going to do it. So, um, when I would ask him point blank, when is it going to be on so we can get the MOU so we can make the application, I was told many times, multiple times, so, you know, we, that is.
That's why I kept asking that you all come because as a resident, I was being told, oh, everything is going to move forward. Everything is going to move forward. Everything is the same, but then now to hear this today, that's not, you know, that was not the truth.
Well, in two thousand, in two thousand twenty-two, without, you know, we, you know, we are still waiting on USDA to even make up their, make their decision. So at that point, that application was submitted. It's not, it's not an online like in some places, it is a snail mail.
Yeah.
Hundred, fifteen hundred, you know, page document that goes in. And so we have to do this snail mail back and forth. So in two thousand twenty-two, when it was approved, it was certainly, that was our understanding too, that we were going to be able to get that because I would love nothing more than to build at the same time. I can't tell you what a pain, a pain it is to try to build something after the fact, after you have residents already there, right? Because these buildings, I mean, we're going to, we should be able to have some residents in these buildings by the end of December in all likelihood. And so, um, and, and these processes with USDA are just long. You know, ta, multiple years, you know, like I said, we've been working on this one with Everglades Townhouse for five years and, you know, through a bunch of different things and, and still had to go find more money because, you know, it's just, their processes are just, it's federal government.
I understand, but I'm still disappointed that this went on for so long and no one came back. So disheartening and a disservice to this community that we had staff that, you know, didn't follow through. And we say we want economic development to come to our community and we're doing a disservice to our own community by not following through and doing what should be done. That's, you know, my disappointment.
Well, I'm hopeful by, you know, by, by your request, uh, for me to be here, that it's still something that the city would like to pursue. It's certainly my desire to get it built and get it going. So, um, and I think we could probably work with the county to try to secure additional funds if need be, but it, it, you know, the, the big one is that community facilities because I mean, if you can get sixty percent of a grant right off the bat and the rest of it's a low interest loan, well, maybe then we can get creative with that low interest loan to have some other grand dollars that, from the county then to help offset that. It might, the goal is be able to build it for, you know, for that the city would own a building because we're going to need a place for our property manager. We would leave space in it. And then Lutheran Services is already, you know, they're, they're still willing, I think, to, to do it, but they got to, you know, got to have it built first. So there's still that ability.
Commissioner, if it's, um, if it's still a will of the commission to, um, have this facility built within, uh, this project, uh, I would ask, did you give me the opportunity to work with Mr. Snodgrass and look at opportunities to work together? And I had an opportunity to look at the original MOU, uh, a week or so ago. And I, I will tell you, it was, um, it was a good first attempt, but I, I, but I think I would recommend through the city attorney that we be able to present an alternative to what you've presented and something that.
It's clearly a draft.
Yeah, something that.
But we wanted to work.
Something that can work for all parties. And if that's the case, if you're still willing, if there's still an opportunity to build it within the facility, I would like if the commission, if that's still your desire, to have an opportunity to make it happen. Yes, sir. Consider it done. I'll talk to you as early as tomorrow, Mr. Snodgrass.
All right, thank you. Any other questions about, uh, construction, since I have the guy here?
Can you give an update on it? I see that there's one side building is coming up.
Come on.
Good evening. My name is Vori Copeland and voice gone screaming at people earlier, so forgive me for that. Construction is going on as you see out there. We got building C, which you, we're talking about right now, the blocks are up. Building E, the blocks are going up. And probably by the end of September, we will probably have four buildings completely up, all the way up to the roof. My goal and, uh, goal of, um, OCM is to have, um, the first building done, uh, with CO by the end of December and then every three weeks after that, turning over a building. So by the first of March, we should be complete with the project total. That's the goal.
Yes, for all five buildings?
All five.
I just have one question. I know it's a question that they probably don't want me to ask. Can you just explain to us, why did you guys decide to use the wood pilings instead of the, um, steel pilings?
Uh, I haven't, I, I wouldn't know that. I'm not, I'm not the engineer.
So, you know, we, we had multiple discussions about the, uh, the wood pilings and we actually had four structural engineers that recommended the, the wood pilings as they are with the concrete cap on it. So the concrete cap will, you know, because how thick is that concrete cap?
Concrete cap is about three feet.
Three feet, uh, on, on top of the, on the top of those pilings and the structural engineers, that's what was recommended. That's what, uh, so that's what we did.
Just one last question. Even, uh, I know the city manager without permission was going to try to work out the, um, the daycare center, would that hinder the process as far as the other buildings going up?
For our, our buildings?
Yes.
No, no, because we'll still be able to, I mean, uh, until we can get that head start building there, we're going to have to, I mean, grade it, maintain it, you know, so it's going to be, you know, and become a, like a mini park even, that's, but we're going to have to maintain it. So you'll still have the same access in there. It, it will make it more challenging because when we build it, you know, we're going to have to build it within certain hours because of tenants, we're going to have to. So it's, like I said, it's not ideal to do it like this. It's just kind of the way it, it came about and, um, uh, if we would have had our way, USDA would have just approved it, said that because you're already building a USDA funded project, we're just going to approve it like it is and, and go forward. But it's a different arm of USDA that I don't have quite the connections with, so it is what it is.
If I can say, I remember, uh, I guess, well, all of us wasn't up there at the time, but I remember the MOU that did come before this commission before, but there was some issues with the MOU and I think between the attorney and the city manager had to work some stuff out, but there was some, there were some issues with the, it was a big issue with the MOU, even with the one they were trying to get with, with the old high school. So it was a lot of, so it's not that it did not come before the commission, but it was some, it was some things that really need to be worked out in the, in the, in the MOU. But hopefully now we can, you know, work it out and get it done.
Who do, who, if, um, they want to, someone wants to, um, rent one of the apartments, who would they, um, contact?
Yeah, I, in fact, I, you know, after being down here and seeing the, the good signs of it going up and talking to the folks about how it's going to be done in December, we're going to start pre-leasing here pretty soon. So I'm going to talk to the property manager that specializes in the, the farm labor housing, um, and then we can, um, well, we need to get a sign out there. The other thing I would ask the commission, and we've talked about this before, is I, I need some language for the sign because I want to put a marker, you know, for the old, that was a commitment I made at the time that we put a, a historic marker, so to speak. And so I, I need language and so we can start getting that, uh, prepared anyway. So it's not last minute and then I'm being called in saying, why didn't you put our marker up for?
A marker for where?
Well, for the old, for Memorial Hospital.
Oh, okay.
So, because I, I mean, a lot of people were born there. I understand that, so. So some sort of a, some, it's like a historic marker, but some, that kind of memorializes what was there, um, to begin with, because otherwise you're going to go by, you're never going to know it existed.
But just like a little stone, you know, to have it like a phone in the marina, I know it'd be, what type of stuff in the marina would be about that?
Something, something that, you know, so, so anything you, any ideas you have on language to put on there, that'd be great.
Okay, now that we know.
And, and the one last thing, um, as we come to the completion of the, um, construction of Barfield Highway, I would ask that you work along with you, with your, your locals, uh, work along with the city during, before and during the time of the final lift of pavement, uh, so we can coordinate. I think we had some challenges, uh, some, a few months ago with trucks and we were able to get that under control by identifying your trucks and, um, pointing out those that didn't belong to that operation. As it's gotten better, but we're, we're in the very, very near future, we're going to be, uh, alternating, closing different sections. Most of it will be done at night, but we'll, uh, have to have a meeting to make sure that we're not.
Yeah.
Men, uh, implementing or, or having any challenges on the repaving, the final lift of that road.
Yeah, that final lift date, whenever it begins, would be great to know.
Yes, sir.
So we can, you know, we just, Vori will need to work it out.
Okay.
Any last question from the commission? Thank you so much. Now we move to our consent agenda. We have three items on our consent agenda. The April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four city commission workshop minutes, a resolution of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty and a resolution twenty-four, oh, twenty-four dash thirty-one. Let someone see a need to pull any of these three items. We'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda item.
Mayor, we have moved that we would have set the consent agenda item April twenty-first, twenty-third, twenty twenty-four commission meeting, resolution twenty twenty-four thirty and a resolution twenty twenty-four thirty.
Are there a second?
No second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Cowan Williams for the adoption of the consent agenda item as presented. Call for questions. Here and under, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice, Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner MacPearson?
Yes.
Mayor Babb?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next we have all business discussion of existing activities or previously scheduled events, if any, city manager.
None at this point, Mayor. I'll cover a few during my report, but nothing at this juncture.
Thank you, sir. We don't have any public hearings or ordinances. We do have a sever resolution, first resolution is resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida requiring public interviews and presentation of credentials for the positions of city manager, city attorney and city clerk, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney and city manager. Could you give us a brief explanation of this resolution?
Yes, Mayor Commission, uh, this resolution has come as a result of, uh, ongoing dialogue about the importance of having, uh, these charter positions more thoroughly vetted and, uh, ultimately providing for an opportunity to interview and check the. and check the credentials of all charter members in the future. This resolution, I want to make it clear, does not supplant the city's ordinance, but it's a resolution identifying the importance of having this done.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having had Resolution 2024-32, properly read into the minutes by City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager. What is your pleasure?
I move that we accept Resolution 2024-32.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Mike Pearson Senior and properly second by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption of Resolution 2024-32. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner MacPearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have Resolution 2024-33, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2024-33, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the City Manager to terminate the sublease agreement between the City of Pahokee, Florida and JPDT Holdings Corp., providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney and City Manager. Could you give us a brief explanation of this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commission. This actual recommendation preceded my administration. Previous administration had made gestures to the state and mentioned to the commission that he would recommend the termination of this sublease with JPDT. When I came on, I thought it was only fair to give JPDT another opportunity to present its case on why it should have another opportunity to move forward with the lease, sublease agreement over the last three months that is not panning out. So this resolution gives me the ability to officially terminate the lease through contract language that guides this process, as outlined in Section 25 with the contract and the notice provision. And also will give me opportunity to exercise a lot of the things through Section 27, the surrender of premises that outlines the processes that's in place to have the property surrendered back to the city. I recommend approval.
City Commission, having heard Resolution 2024-33, properly read into the minutes by City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager. What is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, I move to accept Resolution 2024-33.
No second.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Derek Bolden and properly second by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution 2024-33. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner MacPearson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Resolution 2024-33 passes by unanimous vote. Next, we have Resolution 2024-34, City Attorney.
Resolution 2024-34, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, accepting the proposal for external auditing services from HCT Certified Public Accountants and Consultants LLC in response to City of Pahokee request for proposal number 2024-02, authorizing the City Manager to negotiate compensation and bring back a recommendation for consideration by the City Commission, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney and City Manager. Could you give us a brief explanation of this resolution?
Yes, this resolution deals with giving me a City Manager the ability to negotiate a price for the, for HCT, who was selected as the audit, through the auditors, through the Audit Selection Committee, as chaired by Commissioner MacPearson. That process has exhausted itself, and now it's time to negotiate a final price. This resolution will allow me to do such, do that, do such that. And it will come back to the commission for final approval once that negotiated amount has been determined.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having had Resolution 2024-34, properly read into the minutes by City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager. What is your pleasure?
I move that we accept Resolution 2024-34.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Mike Pearson and properly second by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution 2024-34. Call for questions.
I just have one question. When we put this out for bid, it doesn't go out with a price? And then I guess my second question is going to be, is that going to hold up the process of making sure that we don't fall back into not getting the audit done on time, having to come back?
You're going to respond? The first question is, no, when you do an RFP, it doesn't come with a price. We don't determine a price. It's negotiated based upon the responses that you receive. We only receive one respondent to this particular RFP. And when the Audit Selection Committee officially selected HCT, the process then allows me, as mentioned through resolution, to go back and negotiate. They provided a cost in their packet, but now it's up to me to negotiate that price. We're hoping, since HCT has been the city auditors the last three-plus years, we have real good, and this will come through negotiation, real good numbers to negotiate firmly, for lack of a better term. And I think you'll be surprised, I think you'll be happy with what we come up with. And that will come back to you to answer the second part of your question as early as the next commission meeting, which will eliminate any opportunity for lag in this process. Additionally, if I may, we, the fact that they have been the city auditors for the last four or five years, they're very familiar with the process, they're very familiar with staff, and we're posing ourselves right now to be able to respond almost immediately to their directives once they receive the green light to go.
Thanks.
And just to add to that, there is a prior contract that was asked for as what the city, that was reviewed by the attorney, that was submitted, that let them know certain guidelines and stuff that needed to be followed and adhered to.
Any additional questions? Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner MacPearson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we'll move to Resolution 2024-35, City Attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-35, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving change order number 29 pertaining to Resolution number 2016-20 and the contract with Rosso Site Development, Inc. for the Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project as set forth in Exhibit A here too, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney and City Manager. Could you give us a brief explanation of this resolution?
Sir, this resolution is related directly to Barfield Highway, as I mentioned in previous change orders. This particular one deals with the installation of two six, two six-inch lines and one eight-inch line that's needed for water main shutdown. Again, this is literally paperwork catching up with the process. This work has already been done. The change order is coming now as a result of having our inspectors to take a look at what was presented. Again, just to, for informational purposes, once the change order comes through, we take a look at it, we send it to the funders who's responsible for the funding, and we get their approval, yea or nay. Once we get their approval, we then process it on our end for a change order. It's been approved by the city's engineers, it's been approved by the funding entity. And when they approve it, that means that the dollars allocated to cover, this also comes along as a process with their approval. So this will be 100% reimbursed by the funders. But this again, this work has already been completed. We're just catching the paperwork over the process. I recommend approval.
City Commissioners, we've had Resolution 2024-35, properly read into the minutes by City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager. What is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, we have moved that we would accept Resolution 2024-35.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bolden that we will accept and move Resolution 2024-35. Call for questions.
I just have one question. And I know you're probably tired of me asking questions. So am I looking at this paperwork correctly, Mr. Jackson? I understand what you're saying is catching up with us, but this is from March. Is this correct, that this is from March?
Where are you looking exactly?
On page 35.
Yes. Yes, you're correct. It was originally presented on March 13th, 2024.
So the work was done back in March, and this is August?
Yes.
Any additional questions? Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner MacPearson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we'll move to new business, presentation by the City Manager, activities of upcoming events, if any. Discussion also include the discussion of the City Manager evaluation. And I believe...
Okay. The upcoming event, we have been selected, for lack of a better term, in a rotation. And it's been three, four years coming now. The City of Pahokee will host this year's National Night Out in partnership with the Sheriff's Department. As I indicated, it's been several years since it's been held here. It's another opportunity to bring the community together. The date has been selected, it's Thursday, October 24th. It's going to be from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. We should have the official notification and flyers within days. And we'll post it. We'll use all methods of communication to get the word out. Again, the history of it is, it's just a celebration of crime prevention. It'll be housed in the Marina and Campground, the location for it. We've already started having preliminary planning meetings. We have future meetings scheduled. So we're looking forward to the National Night Out coming back to Pahokee. That's the only thing that I have, unless you have any questions.
Under new business, I would just mention, since it's already in the agenda, on the agenda, the discussion of the City Manager evaluation. What I think we can do is have our City Clerk at our next commission meeting, at least run a copy of the evaluation for everyone to have, so they can see what each of us have put on the evaluation. We know that it's only a three-month evaluation in some areas that wasn't able to fully evaluate the City Manager. It's up to you how much detail you want to present at the next meeting. You could say it's a little as, "I think it's doing a great job," or "I don't think it's doing a great job," or a combination of the two. So it'd be something just, so we'll have on record of how the spec performance during that three-month period.
Okay, if I may, Mayor, I also wanted to mention, and I've forgotten to mention that, I'm establishing training modules across the city departments and divisions, where I'm encouraging, I have encouraged the department heads to come up with ideas that they would like to see trained for their teams. And I also would provide what I'm recommending for training after being here for three months and having an opportunity to get a closer look at each department. So when that process ends, we're looking to have monthly trainings that will allow employees to fully develop in their positions and encourage them to maximize their abilities within their divisions. So, not hopefully, that should yield some better results in terms of having a, having stronger employees in the city. Not saying that they're weak employees, but I'm a firm believer that we can always have improvements. And so that's my goal to see, to implement. One of the things that I talked about during the interviews, my, my desire and my, my will to make sure that we have trained employees, and that, that's, this is my first goal into making that a reality. And I know the commissioner, the commission had selected, had recommended a resolution approving me as the permanent City Manager. That's not on the agenda for tonight. But I would, I would like to be able to present a proposed contract, hopefully by the next commission meeting, and bring that back in resolution form for your consideration. That's it.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to the report of the mayor. I would just like to thank our audience for being here tonight and participating in our regularly scheduled meeting. For a while, we didn't have any audience. I kind of get nervous when we have a like of audience. Some folks get nervous when we have a large audience. But I'm glad that those are here, are here to witness firsthand what we're doing. And I also want to comment and thank the City Commission of the way we are working together. Not saying we always agree, we're going to, that's just common, but we do it in a decent and orderly manner, which is great. So I thank you for doing that. Next, we have moved to the report of the City Manager.
None at, none at, at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And we have the report of the City Attorney, if any.
None at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we move to future agenda items of the Commissioners, if any. We'll start with Commissioner Mike Pearson.
Yes, what I like on the future agenda items, since we're talking about evaluations, I think it would only be fair that we get a list of evaluations, and maybe we need to look at them as a commission. But as far as our City Clerk and our City Manager, that makes sure that we're doing annual evaluations consistently with them. What my, but the thing I would like to put on the agenda is just to even bring those and give them a copy of their evaluation, so they know what's expected, and it don't come as a surprise to them at the end of the year. So my proposal is to bring the evaluations to the next meeting and present it to the City Manager as well as the Clerk, so we know what the expectations are.
The only thing with that, we didn't schedule an evaluation for the clerk, which she should have an annual. I know the City Manager is, as part of his contract, it stipulated it will be on an annual. annual basis, but that's a great point. We haven't really been that consistent with our clerk, so maybe we can put on the future agenda item discussion of annual evaluation for the city clerk and begin doing them, you know?
Well, my thing, I think every employee should have an annual evaluation for every department, um which I've already done some research. There is a valuation that with um that the city clerk has, and I don't know who was doing them in the past, I don't know when the last one was actually done. I think Mr. Jackson pulled up one, and it showed two thousand nine, and I also contacted human resource person, and they sent me a copy. Now there's some things in there I would like to tweak, but the 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 tool is already there.
There was something before two thousand nine, because I remember I was on the commission when it was doing, I think it was Tu- uh Tuana, Tuana Warner, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But definitely in some way, we dropped that ball and it needed to be.
I don't know what we did, it went with Mr. Brandenburg and all, so I remember those. So but that's a good issue of that. But the ones that we do is the clerk and the city manager.
Yes. But I my suggestion would be even to establishing, like Mr. Jackson was saying, he was gonna be doing what I like that idea, as providing the staff with adequate training and stuff that they need to make, and give them the tools they need to be to do their job at the best of their ability. I'm all for that, but I think they still need to have an annual evaluation from each department head, evaluate their staff, and the city manager, evaluate each department.
Right, but what I'm saying, but what we need to vote on is for the clerk and the city manager. We can't do the five for, because he does evaluation for a day.
I'm not saying that we do the evaluation, but we still, I don't know if there's a procedure, because I couldn't find it as far as the city staff having an annual evaluation, but I would like that to be a resolution that.
If you have a.
They have done as well.
We'll say when they receive a performance uh stipend during the annual, they have to.
Not necessarily.
I'm just saying, I'm not saying that's suffice. All I'm saying that this is on our policy, even when we got ordered it, it you just can't give a performance uh merit to an employee who haven't had an annual. Even without the merit of of that, we still need to do in our agreement. It can be part of our personnel policy to have.
They could anyway.
Staff to have all employees evaluate on an annual basis, regardless of whether they're gonna be a performance stipend. But we do have that requirement for.
Well, you you don't have to worry about that at all. Each employee will be thoroughly evaluated.
That's that's my only thing, is just making sure now, uh that was one of the things that I did see on the uh one of the evaluations that was sent to me from uh Mr. um Carlos, is that it had a section in there about giving them a stipend, and I don't think that should be a part of your evaluation. I agree, if we if we only give an employee a bonus or something like that, that can be taken into consideration, but I don't think it should be a part of your evaluation for doing your job annually, because what I'm trying to move forward is move us into doing stuff on a professional manner and evaluating our employees and making sure that they understand what they're supposed to be doing and what is expected of them.
Sounds like something that was used from COVID or something.
So we'll go back to Commissioner Mike Pearson uh request for future agenda item, which consists of.
The first, the first one is getting the performance evaluations and getting to the city manager and the clerk, uh letting them know what their expectations are. And the second, the resolution, if it's not already in the policy, that we have an annual evaluation for all employees that work for the city.
Are there a second on that?
I'll second.
It been properly moved by Commissioner Mike Pearson and properly second by Commissioner Cowan Williams, that that be done and be added to our future agenda items. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Matt Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to Commissioner Bolden, if you have any future agenda items.
Uh not at the moment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan Williams?
No.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Now we move to general public comments from our citizen. At this time, uh city clerk, do we have any general public comments currently completed?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll move to commissioner comments, and for the good of the board, and I'll work back this way, we'll start with Vice Mayor Mervin.
Not a comment, but just want to thank the citizens for coming out tonight, or the ones that's on Zoom that's watching the meeting tonight. I think our commissioners, the mayor stated that we work together, may not always agree, but we learn to uh agree to disagree. Thank our city manager for uh uh the work that he's done so far with following through with some advice or suggestions that you take to him, that he does, he does get on on those, and thank him for that. Just one announcement that's coming up, we we have more uh detail, uh there will be a breast cancer walk that Annie Ica told me she had a lead to announce this, but she's gonna give more update probably at the next uh commission meeting, where there will be a breast cancer walk on October nineteenth, and we're gonna be up on the Marina, uh it starts like a three-mile walk uh from the Marina, and after that, there will be a luncheon. They're looking for teams to um to uh be uh participate in there, like if you wanna get a team of five, a team of five, five and more, um and you name your team, almost like what they do over on the coast, you get a team, you name your team, and and you come up and we're gonna do a walk. Uh that will start about eight o'clock on October the nineteenth. So if you would like to uh have a team to participate, I think a team is twenty-five dollars to uh for the walk, and all the money's gonna go to a fund, uh so Journal's Health Health is gonna be the uh recipient of the funds, that because it goes out and help with uh uh breast cancer test for uh women. So uh but she will give more update on that, but that would be on October nineteenth, um starting at eight o'clock on the Marina in front of the flagpole. And good night.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
I just wanna say thank you to all the residents that attended in person and the ones that attended on Zoom. Um just wanna say thank you for continue to stand involved in the city as well. Thanks. Good night.
Commissioner Bolden? No comment. I just wanna acknowledge the loss of one of our longtime residents in the City of Pahokee. They don't currently live in Pahokee, but they have graduated from here and was a pillar of the community, Karen Banks, uh the spouse of Bishop Robert Banks, Jr. Just wanna acknowledge that, and we do stand our sympathy for the Banks and the family. Commissioner Mike Pearson?
Uh yes. I know you mentioned about the um Martyr the King Project, and I think you asked us for any input. I'm just gonna go ahead and put some of the things that I would like to see out there. Now, um one of them be a multi-purpose field, which would include a soccer field, field, and of course, the park equipment. I know we gotta look at the engineers, whatever have to see if it need to be demoted, whatever the situation might be, but the park equipment, but even the park equipment that we have, that we, it can be on a pavilion, and also, and I left it in the car, I have a brochure that I brought back from the League of Cities that has some different playground equipment, a company that does that type of work, if you wanna look into it, I'll give it to you when you get outside.
Okay.
And um and the resurfacing of the basketball court, um as well as pavilion, and upgrade our um trail, uh these are just some of the things that I wanna see. I don't know how much money, I know we got twenty to fifty, and I know we're not gonna be able to do all of it, but as we talked about in the past, as doing it in phases. And I would like to see a swimming pool, um if we can entertain that, um swimming pool, I know there's some adjacent property, and there may be enough room even on that particular property. And I know these things not gonna happen overnight, but I just wanna put it out there so we can have some future goals as far as what we wanna see with that part. And the other thing that I brought back from the League of Cities, I went uh uh ran into a company that actually, they do what, they have an asphalt zipper. Basically, what this thing do, you can attach it onto the front of a um front-end loader, and it could strip the asphalt. Now I know we will have to train the staff, but this particular company, they would come out and do a presentation as well as train the staff when I spoke to them. I've got some cards, and I give you the information if you wanna reach out to them. And the reason I'm saying that we might can be able to be proactive in some of our inner-city roads. Now the only thing is, um and we can just entertain it, because what I'm thinking about, what he got told me, people say if we were half of their resurfacing their roads, the cost is cut in half when you at least can do that part on your own and have staff able to do that. We can just look into it and see what, you know, might happen with that.
City Commission, having taken care of all of our business that been brought before us, I entertain a motion for the adjournment of our meeting.
So move, ma'am.
Second.
It been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Cowan Williams for the adjournment of our meeting. Official during this meeting at seven forty-two PM.
You didn't take the roll call. You didn't do the roll call.
Call for questions?
Our motion.
Call for questions, hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Matt Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Meeting during at four forty-two PM.
What, seven forty-two?